Question one.
Good evening and welcome to the July Bolivar Board of Education meeting at 6:30 and we're calling this meeting to order. We're going to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance and Kyle, would you lead us, please?
Our Father. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any commendations?
We do not.
We are going to move on to our consent agenda, which are items that we took care of ahead of this meeting with our minutes, bills, and resignations. Is there a motion that we approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
So moved by Mike, seconded by Carrie. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay, let's move on and talk about our, who we're going to be employing. There should be everything.
Yes, we should have some classified employment recommendations for you. Crystal Woods, Christina White, Denise England, Jonathan Schot, Melanie Levno, and Lindsey Knight and Bob Wilson. Bob is currently an employee. He'll be moving to a para position, but we will do an employment recommendation since he's moving into a instructional position.
Is there a motion that we approve the employment of these individuals?
So moved.
So moved by Carrie, seconded by Dan. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. We also have some extra duty assignments that we'll need to approve.
We're making recommendations to approve Kale McCullough, Margaret Hannigan, is that correct, Tim, and Paige Jackson. They'll be doing extra duty assignments for the district.
Fantastic. Is there a motion that we approve these extra duty assignments?
So moved.
So moved by Dan, seconded by Ron. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. And the motion passes.
We have one additional recommendation. Tim Pezzetti has visited with Clayton McCullough, and Clayton would like to do a shared stipend with Austin in regard to wrestling duties. Clayton remains the head coach, but would require board approval to move to a 19% shared stipend between the two of them. They would each get 19%.
If you have any questions or need any clarification on that. Okay. Is there a motion that we approve the change in the coaching stipend as Richard has outlined?
So moved.
So moved by Mike.
Seconded.
Seconded by Dan. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all opposed, same sign. And the motion passes. We're going to move on to our CSIP updates and reports. Since it's a brief meeting and our administrators are not with us, we have thank you all who are here, all five of you. Thank you.
The committed ones.
Right. We outnumber the audience and that's okay. So we're going to, we will breeze through these. Tim, do you have anything you'd like to share with us?
I do.
Okay, please come on up to the podium, sir.
Well, because supervision stuff, I haven't been here for a little while, so I thought I should probably come in and do it just a little bit.
We usually have more people, so.
Yeah. Very busy summer, practices, all kinds of open fields, open gyms, summer camps, all those things going on. So it's been a great summer. Our kids have been very busy, I know that much. Of course, weights and conditioning as well. I want to update you on a few things that we're working on in the athletic department. One of them would be to reinstate our athletic fee that we had a few years ago. It stopped during COVID. The plan would be to charge athletes a $50 fee for high school, a 25 for middle school, with a family cap of $100. So if you have, you know, two high school kids and a middle school kid, the middle school kid basically is free. Now, what goes with that is the athletic pass that they get, which allows them into the games for free, which we would normally sell for $25. So they're getting that $25 pass along with that particular fee. The last few years, those kids have still been getting those passes and getting in games for free, and then we have not been able to recoup any of those costs. Now, that goes for helping out with things like uniform costs, or travel cost, or any things where we're coming up short is where those fees have gone and to help the coaches anything else they might need to help kids. So we're planning on putting that back in place.
And you'll still have a family pass available to?
Yes, yes, we'll have that family pass as well.
Is that per athlete or per sport?
Per school year. So if you're in three sports, one fee. Yeah, so I didn't make that clear, thank you. We have been, it's kind of in its beginning stages, but exploring the possibility of bringing back drug testing again. One of the things that has been a question is, one, what are the costs? Now, it's something, again, something we stopped when we were doing COVID. What would the cost be for doing that? How often do we want to do it based on that cost? And then, Dr. Aspel and I talked a little bit with the new law where marijuana is now legal. If we have a kid who's in a household where parents perhaps are partaking, and the kid pops positive for THC, what do we do? And so we need to really kind of work our way through that. So I'm not sure if that will be this year or not, but it's something that we've started a discussion on. And then-
Are you seeing an increased need for drug testing or is it something that would be helpful?
No, I look at it always as a preventative measure. I don't see it as, hey, we're trying to catch kids. I hope the kids aren't doing that. But we also hope it gives them an opportunity to say, hey, I know I could get tested. I don't want to be positive. And hopefully be a deterrent for those kids. And that's kind of what we felt when I did this at Lebanon. We didn't have an athlete that actually ever tested. Now, we also tested kids who drove to school, which I believe we did here too as well. And every once in a while, one of those guys would pop positive. But honestly, we did not have the athletes who did. So I felt really good about what we felt like we were doing was that preventative measure, and we feel like we accomplished that. And then, I wanted to just bring up to you, we have some new software we're using for scheduling. The schedules are being inputted into that right now. It'll be an online thing. Anytime I make a change, let's say the game goes from 7:00 to 7:30, parents can sign up, or community members can sign up to get a notification, either text or email. They would say that that's happened, or a game's been canceled or whatever. Everything would be online and live for people to look at, with directions to places. If we're going to Lebanon High School, is click on the game. It'll show you where the game is at. So as soon as I get that up and running, I'll send that over to Sheila if she can get it out to you guys, and you guys can take a look at it. It's going to, me, it's going to save a lot of headaches, and a lot of phone calls and texts and emails. Hey, what's the game? Is it canceled yet? Where are we going? What's the change? So I think it would be very helpful. That's what I have. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to take those.
Any questions?
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate it. Mike, would you like to share with us?
I have a very brief update tonight. We are still working closely with our colleagues from Lumen, working on data transfer and training and setup. There's an important date coming up August 1st in this room with a lot of our key stakeholders and groups doing some training. Dr. Wall will facilitate that. We're very thankful that she will do that. We're going to begin registration on August 7th and give our key stakeholders a little more time to get used to the Lumen system. I'm very excited to announce that there will be a couple of new ways for our staff to get help with tech issues. First of all, you'll be able to dial help 4357 from anywhere in the district and speak to a member of the tech team. And if we cannot answer the question right on the spot, we will initiate a ticket for you. Or you can, the other way is you can email help@bolivarschools.org, and it enters a ticket right into our ticketing system. We think that'll be an easier, easy-to-remember, user-friendly way to get help with tech issues. Number three, Google extensions. This week, we made an important change by blocking all Google extensions to our Chromebook users. We are building an allow list, and the teachers and administrators have been very helpful to send us what they need, and we are working on that. And that will improve student safety and network security. There are a few challenges to work through, but the challenges are going to be offset by a safer environment for our students. Finally, we have a lot of items on our summer project list we're working through, including security cameras, switches, air purifiers, door access systems, intercoms, and cable. And that's all I have.
You have any questions?
Any questions?
Yeah, with the Lumen switch, like, I know probably elementary or the lower grades are less involved, but like, when you're talking to high school schedules, right, I mean, kids with full schedules, did our counselors build those in SIS? And now, are they going to transfer into the new system? Or how is that, are they going to have to manually put them in, or do? I couldn't imagine having to use a whole new system starting in school without, I mean, it seems like a huge undertaking. I just-
First of all, it's a great question. It is a huge undertaking. In fact, Ron, that's where our data's kind of hung up, is the master schedule.
Yep.
We have all of the tax of Lumen looking at that, and once they resolve that, we'll be able to pop that, pop that in-
So they're working on trying to get that master schedule, put it in the Lumen.
So they don't have to, that's exactly right. That's where it's hung up a little bit right now. We're in contact with them.
That's the biggest thing in a new school year, too.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Brayden, you want to share with us?
All right. So I just returned from a four-day conference up at St. Louis. It was INSPIRA, the National School Public Relations Association. So it was the communications team from districts all across the country, and it was just incredible. Lots of talk about communications, crisis communications, communication plans, and then just networking when you talk to people that do the same job as you. And, hey, what are you doing? What's working? That sort of thing. And we are doing some things that a lot of school districts don't. A lot of school districts don't livestream their board meetings, I found out. Or they don't do, we're doing the recap videos the next day or days after. People aren't doing that, and a lot of people like that idea. So that made me feel pretty good that we had kind of jumped some people in that. But, so I had handed Dr. Aspel, we're looking at some crisis communications things that I found. We got to, I got to go to a session ran by the St. Louis school that had the shooting last fall, the school performing arts. And so they talked about what worked, what didn't, things to expect, and that sort of thing. And it was, it was just eye-opening. So tomorrow, I'm meeting with AptG, which is our website and alert system vendor, talking to them about Lumen, we're making a switch, because that's what our alert system runs off of. It syncs with our SIS and how we send out alerts. So make sure that is seamless, and then going to do some website updates and that sort of thing. But, and then the Hall of Fame, that's kind of my big thing in the summer. We got the nominations. They are currently with the committee. They're voting. I was hoping to have them all the votes since I could tell you who was voted in, but I'll have that for you probably next week. I'll post it on social media, and we'll make sure we celebrate those people. But we're getting the nominations voted on, and then we'll get everything ready for homecoming to celebrate them. So, yeah. You have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Nice shirt, by the way.
Thank you.
Really do like that.
Great summer shirt.
Yeah, no kidding. Jason, do you have anything?
Yeah, this is real brief.
Good evening, everybody. So this is just really kind of an update on our tiered monitoring stuff. We haven't got our full report back for the files that have been submitted. That should come, I believe, hopefully early to mid-August. But we did get information back about our parent survey results. We're required to send out a parent survey to our parents who have students that have IEPs. So just a quick, what that looks like. Parents could have done it by paper, electronically. We don't see what they fill out. They just, it's electronic, it's immediately sent to DESI. The paper one, they're given an envelope, it's mailed off. We don't ever see it until we get the results. So it's, they're given a series of statements, you know, 10 to 12 statements, that are given a ranking. You know, one is strongly disagree, all the way up to five, or they strongly agree with that statement in relation to what we're doing as a school and as a special education team. So we got our results back. What I look at is to be very favorable ratings from parents. So it just kind of shows that our, our staff is working really hard to keep them connected as, as just about, of course, the students are the important stakeholder, you know, the most important, and the parents are right there facilitating those needs, what we need to do, and how we collaborate. You know, compared to the state average, we're above the state average for our district. All our questions, we're in the area of pretty much leaning towards either agree or higher than that. We're very happy to see those results and see that parents are reflecting that we are putting in that effort. Doesn't mean we're done, doesn't mean we're satisfied or content with where we are. We have things that we still need to work on. But this gives us a good basis for, here's where we are, let's work on targeting some other things and keep going to really excel and bring all those stakeholders, students, staff, parents, anybody else, community resources, together to just boost what that experience is like for all those students and the parents as they see how their students grow through that process. So I have copies of those. If anybody would like copies, I could hand those out. It's very easy to just kind of see where we are, and that's just my main update right now. So.
Do you guys have any questions for Jason? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
TC, what do you have to share with us?
This summer, we've been busy with curriculum writing. We've had a lot of teachers writing. We've got new teachers to the district that are actually writing curriculum. It's been a lot of fun to have them come in and meet them, get to know them a little bit. A lot of the high school teachers are writing away from the district. The requirement is that they do one course kind of here. So we make sure we're going down the right path and all is looking well. And then, once they've done that, they're free to write their curriculum at home and log hours. Many of those high school teachers, as Ron well knows, has, you know, six curriculums that they're juggling and writing for. So giving them that latitude is a good thing. Next year, I know that Mr. Blair is going to be giving our high school teachers opportunities on PD days in the afternoons to continue that work, because it is a lift for our Encore area teachers at the high school and middle school. Been working on a data dashboard for our CSIP. We'll be sharing that with the board. We know that our CSIP, you guys have got our CSIP monthly, but our CSIP requires a quarterly review, and we've got lots of data that will come back in a quarterly fashion, i-ready data, all those academic goals that we've set. So we're looking, we're going to have a nice dashboard for you to review at least quarterly. And then, Tim and I are meeting with Gordon Pace next week to begin that development of that master's program we've been talking about. Our hope is to roll that out in January. We would start a January cohort. It would run for two years, but there's a lot of planning. We want to make sure that it's a quality program, that it's well thought out, that we have instructors ready to go. They know what courses they're going to be teaching, and that we've really scoped and sequenced that out over the course of the two years. So we're looking forward to collaborating, and Dr. Aspel's been very good about encouraging us and cheerleading us on. So next week, we're going to get our feet wet with that and hopefully have a really quality program for teachers.
Will you take applications in the fall, then?
We will. We've created an application. We're ready to send it out. We used a sample from a couple of other districts. And then teachers, we sent out an initial survey asking, hey, what kind of candidate should we be looking for? They gave us some great feedback on the type of teacher that would be great in this master's program. So we've developed an application that addresses that. We'll send that out in the fall. I envision us talking to new staff about it when they come back, letting them know what's there, and just sending it out to everyone, and getting those applications back, and then using that good criteria to select the candidates for that program.
TC, what is the cohort size? Is there a max number?
We're thinking 10. You know, we have to have eight. Eight to 12 is really the ideal sweet spot. Any more than 12, it's getting kind of big. So 10 to 12. So, yeah, I think it'll be a good thing. Any questions about that?
No. Or anything else?
I don't.
Just a couple of things. Paul and I are working on a letter of support request in regard to RUTID. You might have seen the recent article about some of the needs for funding and what that looks like at the state. So we have a letter of support in regard to the RUTID program, just a continued effort. That's been a really good program for us. Carla's done a good job. We've had our decision day, was a good celebration with a lot of people. But that is currently funded through grant. We have a match to that, but we're trying to look at what that looks like after this, this next year and the future of that. We believe it's really a very viable program for us. We just have to look at how we can make that one of our priorities at the high school in regard to how we're serving students. TC and I did meet with the Professional Development Committee. We're working with them on their budget. One of the things that we're probably going to change is we're going to bring to you in August some professional development stipends. Those are hours that the officers do to facilitate the professional development program, and we'd like to move that into a specific stipend that the board approves, rather than it be a log of hours. And that way, it's a little bit more transparent as well as fair to the Professional Development Committee. That will come out of, come off of their budget, so that does provide them a little bit more flexibility in what they're doing to focus on building level needs. One of my last items will be next Tuesday, the 25th, 6:30 to 8 o'clock, we'll be meeting at the high school commons area. We would like to invite anyone who has interest in our capital project planning and priorities. We are going to be presenting some of the various district needs that we have, and start talking about what those look like and the scope of those projects. We'll be talking about particularly the, the funding mechanisms that we use to accomplish those and what we might be looking at. We'll be asking people for their input in regard to how they see those priorities, and asking them to facilitate conversations with us about the importance of each of those. Now, this is just a first meeting, so there will be additional meetings throughout the fall. The ultimate goal is that we build some stakeholder involvement and engagement into one input. We hope to be able to develop a list of things that will result in a ballot question for April of 2024 for a no-tax increase bond issue that will allow us to accomplish a lot of things across the district. So if you have interest in attending that, Brayden will put out some information through social media tomorrow, and we would just invite you to come. It's 6:30 to 8. You don't have to stay for the whole thing, but it won't be the only meeting. So if you can't come next Tuesday, we will have building level meetings. So we're going to be engaging primary, intermediate, but we'll also be engaging those parent groups. So this will be an ongoing event for us. So encourage people to attend if they have interest in those projects.
And our board governance, I want to echo what Richard said and, and say how important it is. We're kicking off this planning meeting with our stakeholders in our community. And so several of us have reached out to people specifically and invited them. We want to make sure we have a good group there. So if you know people in the community who would like to have a say, please do let them know that they're invited to this kickoff meeting. The registration is open for our November MSBA conference, and Sheila has sent out registrations. I think several of us have already signed up. Not everyone can go. Some going earlier than others. So we'll, we'll look forward to that. Also wanted to make mention about the court ruling on behalf of Lee Summitt School that reaffirmed the significance of local, local control of school boards on the decisions that are made by local boards for their students and for their patrons. It was a suit against the Attorney General at the time, Eric Schmidt, for some action that he took in suing schools, and the court said, you can't do that. School, local control matters in the state of Missouri. So thank you to our friends at Lee Summitt for continuing that effort. And again, the stress for the state of Missouri is that local control really matters. So I want to make sure that, that we make note of that, and also a good lesson in advocacy and why it's important that our school districts and our school boards lobby for things that matter for public schools. That's all I got.
Okay.
Okay. Let's go on to strategic planning with our district financial planning. Chelsea, I think that's you.
Good evening. As we begin to close up the school year, I am presenting you with a overall revenue and expenditures format that I plan to continue using as we move forward in the new fiscal year. The top two portions will provide a review of your revenue and expenditures by fund each month. And as we continue to use this, you'll be able to see how things are being spent each month. It also will provide Dr. Aspel and I a review as we budget for years to come. At the bottom, you'll have an estimated ending fund balance. This will show our teacher transfer for fund two. That has already been done, so it's included in the revenue expenditures that are above. We also have our planned 7% transfer of 1.2 million, just a little bit over that. And also, we have our allocated funds at the bottom that we have received the funding for those, but we've not spent those. So those will be coming out in the new fiscal year. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you so much for putting that together for us. That's very thorough. I appreciate all the detail that's in there.
And your monthly report that she provides gets you kind of month by month, and then this'll build up to that summary report, so you'll always have a snapshot of where we are fiscally. And then if you see something that you're like, oh, what, why did, why did expenditures go up or revenue go up? We can, well, we got our first payment in, or that's our largest new payroll. So.
Very good.
Thank you.
Very helpful. Okay. Facilities and operations.
Yeah, we have a lot of things going on. I want to make sure we give a shout out to our maintenance and custodial. There is, there is a lot of work going on. They've done such a great job. We're trying to now kind of get towards the finish line with cleaning, waxing, painting. We have a lot of projects still in progress with our maintenance department, but we, we have that goal, that kind of that first week of August of trying to wrap everything up. And then it's really about as people come back into the buildings. So a lot going on there. We have wrapped up the Liberator Park parking lot. That's been striped. We're doing the punch list review on it, but it's, it's being finalized right now. FEMA continues. They're painting inside. They've started some of the final work on the HVAC. We did get notice that our transformer is scheduled, so that's a good thing. So a lot of good progress going on there. And again, a lot of times, you know, you see the building is up on the outside. A lot of work is on the inside, so, but they'll get back to work on some of the finished work and the grading and the, the area surrounding that here in the next, next month. So lots of good things occurring. Then, obviously, we've already talked about the capital project planning, but our facility needs, we're in progress of evaluating those in the next five years. We also are getting ready to start our hail damage from a year ago. That work is in progress. The board did approve that contract, and so we are in the, well, the vendors are in the process of securing all the materials, and we hope to have work starting here in the next week or two.
You have any questions for Richard? Okay. Moving on to construction project review.
I kind of covered that, so I think we're in good shape.
Okay, moving on then. Let's go on to our action items. We're going to talk about approving the certified salary schedule amendment. It's just a minor thing, but important.
So on the certified salary schedule, what, the, the schedule that we have had for several years has just been, you know, years one through thirty. And, and so in this case, what we're asking, we had met with salary welfare, and we were talking about what happens if a teacher has thirty-one, thirty-two, or thirty-three years if they decide to stay longer. So in this case, we're asking for an amendment to the certified schedule that adds a plus thirty line, and that, that would allow that individual to say, okay, even if the base doesn't change, they could still get their experience step. But if the base changes, they would get their experience step and the base adjustment. So that revision allows us to enter into payroll with the board approves. Without that plus thirty-one or plus thirty step, we're not able to do that unless there's a base change. So we would recommend, we think that's a good thing for individuals who have decided to teach at thirty-one, thirty-two, or thirty-three years.
Absolutely. Okay, so at this point, is there a motion that we approve the certified salary schedule agreement?
So moved.
So moved by Kyle.
Second.
Seconded by Dan. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. And the motion carries. Now we're going to talk about the certified and classified leave policy.
So we've made those, we've added and changed our sick leave, personal leave to leave and/or PTO. So we have two recommendations for you. One will be to approve the certified leave revisions, which is MSBA policy GCBDA. And then the second recommendation is, it's, it's for classified. It's the same recommendation, but it's a classified staff policy change, which is GDBDA, and you have received those policy edits already for review. So we would make a recommendation to approve, which would be two different motions. One is the certified, and then one's the classified.
And once these are approved, when will they be available for our certified and classified staff to see them?
We'll push those out, well, tomorrow may be a little tough, but we'll have those out next week.
Because I know that's a topic that people, a lot of people have questions about, and we've probably all fielded some of those, so.
Now, we have provided those policy adjustments to the salary welfare committee, so that it's not that they haven't been sent out. We've, we've provided the RALA, the Republic, and so we've, we've had those to the committee, and so those are what we're working off of.
Okay. Very good. So we're going to have two different motions for this one action. First, is there a motion to approve the certified leave revisions, which is MSBA policy GCBDA for the 23-24 school year?
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by, so moved by Ron, seconded by Carrie. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. And the motion passes. Next is a motion to approve the classified leave revisions of MSBA policy GDBDA for the 23-24 school year.
So moved.
So moved by Mike, seconded by Kyle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Oh, no, we didn't vote. Sorry. Did we vote?
I think we did.
We didn't vote.
Okay, well, I'm sorry, caught in a loop there. Okay, motion passes. All right.
She's got to get us out of here at 7:15.
Yeah, I'm under pressure. Right. Trying really hard here. Okay. Going on to talk about our navigator agreement.
We have a navigator agreement. It's an agreement with CMH, and they provide what's referred to as a navigator that assists our nurses in each of the buildings. We've, Dr. Garber and I have been working on a couple revisions to that agreement. He had, Dr. Garber worked with our nursing staff, and so we've been able to make some revisions to that agreement where that navigator will be able to take on some additional partnership roles with our nurses, and so we would recommend approval of the navigator for this next year with the partnership with CMH.
Okay. So, so moved by Kyle.
Second.
Seconded by Ron. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I moved my finger over, so I'm going to leave over. Can't do that last time. Okay, let's talk about facility agreements with Southwest Baptist University.
Tim has received the facility agreements for football and swim, and we have provided those for your review, and we'd recommend approval of those agreements. It provides football at $3,500 per game, and swim is $125 per hour. We do have to provide our own lifeguards this year for swim.
Any further discussion? I just want to make sure everybody knows that number, because if I get asked one question on the community as much as anything, it's how much do we pay SBU for the use of the, of their facility? $3,500 per game. It's not free. We also did not pay for part of that stadium, so we pay $3,500 per game. Okay, just to clarify that. Any other discussion? Would anyone else like to say anything? Okay. Would someone like to make a motion to move forward with this facility use agreement?
So moved.
So moved by Kyle.
Second.
Seconded by Dan. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. And the motion passes. Let's talk about our JAG grant renewal.
So we've expanded the JAG. We offer one through our alternative school program, and then we have the high school. This is our annual agreement for JAG, but it includes two positions.
Okay. Is there a motion that we move ahead with our JAG grant renewal?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye. Forgot to ask, are any extra discussions? Sorry, I'll look. Let's talk about our standard response protocol.
Dr. Garber has facilitated some conversation with you previously in regard to our emergency planning. The standard response protocol allows us to identify specific terms in regard to what levels of response we will have to certain emergency situations. This is part of the I Love You Guys Foundation. It also aligns well because we, the next item is our Raptor, which is the governor is providing funding for school districts to initiate the drill and notification system for employees with Raptor. So it'll align with that protocol as well. So recommend approval of the standard response protocols.
Is there a motion that we approve the standard response protocols for the coming school year?
So moved.
So moved by Dan. Is there a second?
Second.
By Mike. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. And the motion passes. Now we're going to move on, speak more, we're going to talk about more safety.
So Raptor is available to school districts at no cost, which is the drill management and the employee notification system. What we are also doing is we would like to purchase some additional components that Raptor has available, and one is a visitor management system, so we'll be able to utilize that in each of the buildings. It will allow us to scan a license to run a preliminary. It's not a full background check, but a preliminary background check to potential visitors to building. We still have a policy in regard to certified volunteers, but this will allow us to better facilitate visitors that may come to the building to see students. So we believe that that's an, an important part, so that the board is aware as well as our community, this was part of our safety grant that we received, so this does provide the funding for that visitor management system.
Very good. So if a visitor checks in once, do they have to check in every time?
Yes. No matter if we had the system or not, you would always have to go through the office. That's correct.
Okay. Is there a motion that we consider the approval of the Raptor technologies?
So moved.
So moved by, oh, seconded by?
Second.
Mike? Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. And we're going to talk about some more security proposals.
Yeah, we, so we are in the process, really a lot of good work by Dr. Garber and Mr. Pitts in regard to coordinating a lot of the safety and, and purchases. So we really had several buckets in that, in that grant. One of those was fencing. So we are adding some security fencing at the primary and intermediate. So we would like to recommend a purchase of, it's a, recommend a proposal by Anchor Fence for $21,400 for some security fencing at the BIS and BPS. That would be your first motion for Anchor Fence.
Is there a motion that we approve the option for Anchor Fence?
So moved.
By, by, okay, Carrie and Dan. Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. And then we have some others?
Yes, so we're also, part of that grant is to provide a, a security, safety film on all of our building level entrances. So we have been working with a variety of different vendors as well, some local vendors in regard to that. We did attend a workshop in regard to some of the different, so that film comes in varying degrees of thickness. And so we're not talking about putting a film on to reduce glare or sunlight. It's, it's strictly for security. So what we are finding that in our main entrances, excuse me, all of our entrances have a, your, your exterior doors and then a vestibule. So right now, this proposal is only for the exterior doors of each of those main entrances, including central office. And what we're recommending is a proposal by Safe Haven Defense, and it is for $46,926, and it is for a 30 mil, what they refer to as a riot control security laminate. It does have an anti-graffiti component to it, but this would be installed at all of our building level entrances. Now this, we have 25,000 of that, 46,000 is covered by the grant, and so we're recommending that we, we fund the, the additional at local cost just because of the pure safety and security piece. We do want to continue some additional work with the local provider in regard to some of our vestibule and some of the window safety film. That doesn't necessarily have to be the type that this particular brand is. We will make some videos available in the board follow-up in regard to what we're doing and why we believe that this is the, the best product for those exterior doors.
All right. So is there a motion that we move forward with the safety film proposal?
So moved.
So moved by Dan.
Second.
Seconded by Ron. Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. And the motion passes.
The last one I'm going to present to is, is a part of our safety grant as well, is a company called Gatekeeper. Gatekeeper provides a bus security system. We have been working with Russ Martin in regard to the need for a camera system. We also, what, what happens is, is moving to a new technology base, which would provide some hardened hard drives, more secure, but it will also wirelessly connect when the buses come on campus, allowing greater access for administrators to access recorded video. And then when buses return to the bus barn, they will automatically download that video that has been there. So this is a, a huge technology improvement. Now, we had budgeted about $85,000 for this particular project. The cost of the project is really more around $95,000. One of the things that we really underestimated on this is just the install cost. And so the total cost of the project is 136,000. The difference between what we estimated is largely install cost. So we're working with Russ and Alvy and Raines Martin in regard to some potential shared options that we could consider because we don't have enough grant funding on that. But we do need to go ahead and start moving forward with this so that we can get on the books for their schedule and install of the camera system. So we would, so the Gatekeeper is the system. Midwest Transit is actually the group that facilitates the, the equipment purchase and install. So we would recommend approval of 136,425 to Midwest Transit for a bus security system.
And will they be able to get it done before, when school starts?
Oh, no. It, it'll be an ongoing. It'll, it'll take us a scheduling, and so it'll, it probably will take us at least probably till October to get everything done. So we'll say August and September.
Okay. Good to know. Okay. So is there a motion we move forward with the bus radio transfer, or equipment proposal?
So moved.
So moved by, seconded by Mike. Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. And that motion passes. It's not even 7:15. I don't go on record as saying that.
I did challenge Paul, did you? Can you do it at 7:15?
Yeah, I'm highly competitive and goal-oriented. Do we have any public comments? Okay. So at this point, at 7:00, is there a motion that we adjourn?
So moved.
So moved. Is there a second?
We all should have held out.
Are you? Okay. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.